I'd like to call to meet order and thank everyone for their attendance today. We have a very special meeting, look forward to a good meeting as usual. We begin with the invocation by the Reverend Danette Crawford, Pastor of Joy Ministries. If everyone would stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance. Danette, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, thank you for this honor. Lord, we thank you for today and we thank you, God, for the privilege to come together. I pray that the wisdom of the Lord God would be upon us. And God, I pray that as we seek your face tonight, that every one of our council members would have the wisdom in the mind of Christ. Lord, I pray for the city of Virginia Beach, your divine protection on all of our first responders, and I pray, God, your blessing on this great city. And we give you praise, orchestrate everything that's done and said tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Danette, for coming down. Madam Clerk, do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
Ms. Kane, Mr. Earn, may I have your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of April 3, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, is second and is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to zero, with Mr. Davenport absent, Mr. Earn abstaining, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Counsel, I'm gonna take a special moment if I may. If Harry could come on up and then I'll bring this down to you. We have a legend coming forward here. I think you all know that Harry Dyzel served on City Council with us for a number of years, but prior to that, he was the fire chief of the greatest city in the world, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I think all of y'all know, I had the pleasure of doing rescue way back a number of years ago, in the seventies. And I could not help but each day, see how that fire department progressed. And it progressed with your leadership. In addition, I would say to you also, back then, the fire and rescue, the firemen could volunteer with the rescue squad. In fact, I saw one of the guy's son earlier today that I used to run with. And I couldn't help but notice the type of people that you brought on board, the character and the leadership that they had, they were just spectacular. You certainly knew how to choose people, Chief, there's no question in my mind. So it's my pleasure to recognize you today, sir, by reading this resolution if I may. Whereas former Fire Chief Harry Dyzel has spent virtually his entire life serving his community and his country. First entering the fire service in 1958 as a volunteer member of the Fairfax County Fire and Rescue Services, and in 1966 becoming a career firefighter with his volunteer service punctuated with the completion of military duty and included assignments to the Eighty-Second Airborne and First Calvary Divisions. Whereas Chief Dyzel assumed the position of Fire Chief in Virginia Beach on May 1st, 1974, and at that time was only the second person to serve as Chief. Whereas Chief Dyzel's thoughtful and strong leadership did much to shape the fire department into what it is today. Whereas when Chief Dyzel took the helm of the Virginia Beach Fire Department, there were only 120 career firefighters, now there are almost 500. Whereas in order to professionalize the department and prepare its members for the future, Chief Dyzel in 1975 initiated the process to secure the necessary funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia and the city to build a dedicated fire training facility. Whereas because of his efforts, the 10,000 square foot state-of-the-art fire training center was funded, designed, and built with 120-seat auditoriums, training classrooms, administrative offices, a full-service library, and a burn building. Whereas the first firefighter recruit class was trained in the building soon after its opening in 1979. And the years since then, thousands of firefighters have received essential firefighting and lifesaving training at the facility. Whereas Chief Dyzel also supported the development and funding of the urban search and rescue team, which led to the development of the Virginia Beach-led FEMA team, Virginia Task Force Two, and members of that team as well as other FEMA teams from across the country trained at the fire training center. Whereas his leadership extended beyond the operational aspects of the fire department, among many other things, he took an active role in protecting the health and welfare of his personnel by implementing the city's first no smoking and no tobacco consumption policy for new fire applicants. Whereas Chief Dyzel retired in September 1997, but his commitment to public service continued. In 2002, he was unanimously appointed to the City Council to represent the Kimpsville District of Virginia Beach, and he subsequently was elected to two additional terms of office, serving on the City Council for more than 10 years. Whereas his support for public safety also included his service on the city manager's management leadership team, where he acted as an ombudsman for all public safety divisions within the city. Whereas the City Council wishes to express its deep appreciation for former Chief Dyzel's decades of exemplary public service to our city by renaming the city's fire training center in his honor. And now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, that the Virginia Beach Fire Training Center located at 927 Burnet Road is hereby renamed the Harry E. Dyzel Virginia Beach Fire Training Center. End.
Yes, let me sit down, because I want to make a motion if it's okay for me to make a motion now, Mark?
Okay, ready to make a motion, Mark?
Sure, I'm gonna do it.[423.12][423.12](laughing) And I appreciate this, I mean, as much as I'd like to take credit for this, it wasn't my idea, I'm just simply following forward what frankly some of Harry's former employees and current employees thought about. So, some five months after I was first elected in 2002, we had a resignation in the Kimpsville District. I had no idea who this guy was, that people said that we needed to appoint to this position, everybody said he was really great, but I had no idea who he was. But I did math, I've served with 24 different people since I've been on council here. And Harry's been one of the most brutally honest, direct, and blunt people that I've served with. And now, you do the ex-cop versus the ex-firefighter, natural tension, and Harry often told me if I'd scored five more points on the exam, I could've gone to the fire academy instead. But Harry's also had the, has always had the interest of the citizens first. And he didn't always say a whole lot, but when he did, people really listened. And I wish I could tell you all the stories he told me, but we do have to keep this G-rated because this is, this is on TV. But when you go to the fire training center, you see the pictures of the past fire chiefs and the current fire chiefs there, and when you see Harry's, it's like the haunted mansion that the eyes are following you around. And, and I've always thought that, but, but that's okay, because Harry's watching out at the fire training center. And the fire training center was his baby, you know, he improved training there, a result of the hard work and dedication. Citizens are better for it, but so are the firefighters for it because of the additional training that they do. And I had the opportunity to see a lot of this training, we had the Filipino firefighters in for, for that process, and it was just absolutely amazing just to see this, I'd say just the six months that those guys went through, not, not to mention all the rest of the training, it was absolutely fantastic. And I, I just, I can see why people don't complete it, because a lot of it's pretty scary. But, but while you see here today, I'm really gratified to see all these firefighters here today, part of Harry's family, but, but I'm also very happy to see Jenny here today because Harry's has always been very proud of his family, and Harry has some really cool Hollywood connections too, which, which are neat with his, with his family. So, Mr. Mayor, it's my, my pleasure to move approval of the resolution directing that the Virginia Beach Fire Training Center be renamed the Harry E. Dyzel Virginia Beach Fire Training Center.
I have a motion and I have a second.
And I do want to say that, that you folks who are out there in the audience, the current leaders in the fire department, and everybody else, I want you to make sure that when people come through that, that fire training center, whether they're new recruits or people coming in on the FEMA training and things like that, you tell them why it's named the Harry E. Dyzel Training Center.
I have a motion, second, discussion, I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have passed the resolution renaming the fire training center to the Harry E. Dyzel Training Center.[600.16][600.16](applause)
Mayor, does this thing work down here?
Yes, sir, it does.
Not gonna say a whole lot to say, I'm breathing hard again. One of the things that I learned to do, when it's council, particularly, is to be a better listener than I was a talker. And that came about when the President of the National Home Builders introduced me. I had a convention, we had been fighting for several years, and he introduced me as a model fire chief. And I thought, well, that's pretty nice. Well, I got home and looked up the word "model," means small imitation of real thing.[661.00][661.00](laughing) Naturally, I listen to what politicians say closely. I think the simplest thing to say is "thank you," it's my honor. And I wish there was a universal logo that we could stamp, and would acknowledge everybody that took part in the construction of that training center and the current training processes. But in any event, I wish all of you well, and if I can ever get to breathing correctly again, I'll have a long conversation with you, but not right now.
Is Andy Friedman here?
Yes.
Andy, if you could come forward, I have a proclamation to read, please, another one. Andy's our Director of Housing. Whereas the city of Virginia Beach is proud to join the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. Whereas the 1968 Fair Housing Act guarantees the right of all Americans to dwell in the neighborhood of their choice, which is one of the most important components of our national civil rights policy. And whereas even though this nondiscriminatory policy is the law of the land, its proper enforcement requires the continued cooperation of all levels of government, the real estate and home building industries, and private systems. And whereas throughout the city of Virginia Beach, this spirit of cooperation is being provided through the efforts of our state, federal, and local governments, and with the support of countless community and nonprofit organizations. And whereas promoting equal housing opportunities is essential to our larger mission of promoting justice in all areas of life and for all citizens, an equal housing opportunity has a dramatic impact on school integration and the acceptance and understanding of ethnic and racial diversity. Now therefore, I, William B. Sosmans Jr., Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, hereby proclaim April 2018 Fair Housing Month in the city of Virginia Beach, and to urge all citizens to join in creating and promoting fair housing opportunities for all people. Andy, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[801.13][801.13](applause)
Would you like to say anything, Andy?
No, I appreciate the mayor and council support, this is a really important issue for our whole community, and this is meaningful.
We appreciate the job you do, sir. Okay, I'm gonna open a public hearing on the sale of excess city property 1449 Old Virginia Beach Road.
So we have one speaker, I think he wants to speak under the agenda though, he doesn't want to speak on the public hearing.
On 1449, that one?
Yes.
Okay, how about sale of easements over city property in a facility traffic area 2813 Two Farms Lane?
Same, same issue.
Lot 7, 8, and 12 in the 3300 block of North Landing Road?
That's, yes, all one ordinance.
Winston Avenue and Indian River Road?
Yes.
3400 North Landing Road?
Correct.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that in ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you.
I will now turn it over to the Vice Mayor for the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, first I would like to move that we do an add-on to the consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions, which would be item. I ten the resolutes, a resolution to support the expansion of film production incentives. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion, call for the question.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved.
That's been added on, sir, to the consent.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Under the first, and under the consent agenda, I'd like to move approval first for items I five, which is a resolution to request the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project, Ray, I-264 Independence Interchange Improvements, and authorize city manager to enter into any necessary agreements for project development. Six, resolution to request the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a locally-administered project, Ray, Nemo Parkway Phase 7B, and authorize city manager to enter into any necessary agreements for project development. Seven, ordinance to amend the adopted fiscal year 2017-18 capital improvement plans, project and scope, Ray, bus stop infrastructure and accessibility improvements, rural road improvements two, traffic safety improvements four, and to authorize the acquisition of necessary property and easements. Item eight, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement for contributions of funds to the Department of the Army projects at Lenhavon Inlet A, maintenance dredging, and B, additional work. And item 10, which is a resolution to support the expansion of film production incentives. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
You've got planning, we've got a couple, open a public here for planning.
Under planning for, for consent, J1, which is the application of Kelly V. Gentry in the Princess Anne District. K3, the application of Logan Virginia Properties LLC, Byler Azalea LLC, and Gateway Freewill Baptist Church, Inc., in the Kimpsville District. Item five, which is the application of Evergreen Virginia LLC in the Beach District. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor's abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
And item six, which is the application of Henry W. and K.F. Stanley in the Beach District, and please note that the mayor is also abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
Going now to ordinance number one, ordinance to declare the property located at 1449 Old Virginia Beach Road to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize city manager to sell to Noel P. Pacio and Maria Pacio. Call the Speaker. We welcome you, sir. And before your time starts, let me read this statement, I should've done it earlier. "I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Please begin."
Thank you, good evening, members of City Council and city manager. I'd like to start, if I can give a compliment. City Manager Hanson, I called your staff today to find out about this issue, and everyone was fantastic, called me back, and provided me all the information I'm gonna share with you in a very timely and nice fashion, so, good job, everybody, on that. My journey took me to the city website, the city assessor's office, the city attorney's office, and then a paralegal named Kim Saranos at the city attorney's office. I'm encouraging you to either defer on this until you get more information and study this issue, or just vote it down altogether. As good stewards of our tax money, this is one of the worst real estate deals I've ever seen. Imagine my surprise as I went and looked at this cute little house, brick house, at 1449 Old Virginia Beach Boulevard, and dug into the details of this. What I found is this house built in 1999, three-bedroom, two-bath, is sitting on a three-quarter acre lot, is currently assessed by the city at $76,000, but tonight you're gonna vote to sell it for $15,000, $15,200, a $61,000 loss. But wait, there's more, because as you actually dig into the numbers, it's a $127,428 loss to taxpayers that you're about to vote on. How do you know this, Reed? Well, I did about two and a half hours of detective work by talking to your staff today and looking on websites. If you look at the history on the city website, you'll find that this property was purchased for $70,000, but it was purchased 45 days before for $66,000, turning a nice profit of $36,000 to Mr. Thomas Brown. Yet the same property was advertised for sale just 45 days before at only $62,000. So had we taken our opportunity to purchase it when it was less, we probably could've got a better deal, but instead of the $66,500, we paid $99,000, and now we're gonna sell it for 15. So I started looking into this, and tonight if you read your packet, you'll find out that you tore down the house on March 22nd, and we paid $9,300 to demolish a $119,000 house that we taxpayers paid for on this property. In addition to that, you took the property off the tax rolls for a period of two and a half years, and I actually have that information, and that came to a grand total of $3,555. I see I'm almost out of time to explain all this. The bottom line on this is, we can do better, and I understand the ITA, and I understand trying to preserve Oceana, but selling this property at a $127,000 loss is not being good stewards of our money. And I really think you should not do it, take an opportunity and sell that property more at its market value. Lastly, and I'm almost out of time, there are a number of information that is not available on your website relevant to this.
We thank you very much for your comments.
I have a question if I could.
Please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Freeman, did you take into consideration, because I know you've done a lot of homework and you're be commended, but that the lot is under our current ACEs, which probably is not buildable, and we're basically taking it and making it part of one buildable lot?
Yes, I did, I looked at the property values of the other lots that are within there too. And again, our city assessor assessed that land at $176,000 this year. So this isn't me, but this is our city assessors, and you can go on your website and check this information. But all the properties that are in there are also of equal value. My point is that selling something we paid $99,000 for...
I got it.
Okay, all right.
Do a question to staff, I'll wait for motions.
Okay.
Do I have a motion, then I've got a comment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do I have a second?
Do you.
Yeah, and thank you for your conversation. As you know, this has been a program that we partner with the state for a number of years, and was put together to save Oceana.
Yes, sir.
And yes, we do pay market price for a house, or duplex, or whatever in that area, because we don't want to condemn, we want to come together and have a price that is a willing seller. Then at the same time, we must take that property and reduce its use. And as you well know, because it was clearly stated here, this is just gonna become part of someone's yard, adjoining property's yard. This has been going on for a number of years, where, and I'm happy to say, this is a model for the United States Navy, where they use it and teach people about how to deal with encroachment around other naval air stations, as well as now they're doing it over in Langley with the Air Force and so forth now. Your comments, I hear ya, but I think you also got to be fair to, as to the reason why this is being done. It's been a very successful program. This individual cannot do anything with this property, has no right to build on it, and that's included in the easement, and it just expands the lot size that the house that he currently lives on.
Actually, according to the website, he can build structures on there, he can't build additional dwellings, but he's open to build anything he wants on that property as long as it conforms to APZ-1 standards.
Okay, but anyway, sir.
I have no, I have no question.
All right, well, I'm the next speaker on the next issue, so if you want me to just stay out here.
I've made this, I've made this comment before, because we've had other issues. I would just like the city manager to convey the real estate assessor, this is another example where the assessments that are in the database are not aligned with the practical reality of the property. And this has gotta be incident number N plus 10 that we've come across, and we really need to fix that, because it does create a lot of discrepancies and misperceptions by the public. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, call for the question, please.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the ordinance.
Ordinance number two, to declare excess property with restricted easements in the interfacility traffic area, and authorize the city manager to sell same to the United States of America, 2813 Two Farms Lane, Lot 7, 8, and 12 in the 3300 block of North Landing Road, Winston Avenue and Indian River Road, and 3400 North Landing Road. Call the Speaker, please.
Reed.
We welcome you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. For once, I'm gonna be brief. The reason I'm up here on this issue is...
And I thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I oppose the entire concept of the ITA. I understand the reason for trying to save Oceana and the whole issue with this, but this ITA program that's being briefed, the monies from this are going back into the ITA fund to fund this project and this plan. And I've spoken here before, you guys passed it at the last meeting before Christmas, to approve these overlays. I think the ITA in general is a really bad idea to develop in the southern end of the city, and while it's marketed as a plan to make our city green, it's chock-full of urban development, and the funds from this sale, which by the way, you're making a good amount of money off selling this to the Navy, that's, that's good, that you're reinvesting that, but we have higher priorities. So all I wanted to say to you tonight is, while I understand why this is done to prevent BRAC, and I understand what you're doing, I think the project and the plan to spend the money to encourage development south of the Green Line is misguided, and that's my objection to this, and I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion, call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, Mr. Moss abstaining, you have approved the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to explain my extension.
Please.
As an employee of the Department of Defense, I have concluded that my participation in the City Council discussion and vote on this ordinance would result in the appearance of a conflict of interest, under the appearance of conflict of interest standard, which is much higher than the state standard. Therefore, my decision is to abstain from the agenda item referenced in this letter for the aforementioned reasons.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ross. Item number four, ordinance to study pay disparities and establish a policy of pay parity for the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office. Call the Speakers, please.
First speaker is Bill Bailey. The next speaker will be Michael Carter.
Bill, we welcome you, sir.
Vice Mayor, members of council, William Bailey, President, Virginia Beach Firefighters. First I want to go on the record is, I'm not opposed to pay parity for the Sheriff's Department, but I wanted to talk about it for a minute. All city employees deserve an equal opportunity and have a fair pay system for the hours, the time that they put in on the job. This, this system does nothing for police, fire, and EMS, and all the other city employees, but by bringing the Sheriff's Department up to the system that we have, all it really does is make the situation worse. So I want to go into that. What we need is a pay system that allows an employee to know where their future pay is going to be. Now you go into a grade, and unless you promote, you're locked in with minimal growth. Finally, to take the time, time to study the pay disparity issue has passed. If you remember back in 2003, 2004, we had the Wood Dyzel Compression Study, we were gonna study our pay system, it's been 14, 15 years. I think we have the answer. We all know what the answer is. It takes money, it takes leadership, and it takes action on your part. If you're going to bring the Sheriff's Department up to pay parity over a four-year period, now is the time to look at the entire pay system and phase us all in over a four-year period. The mayor and I have talked about this for the last five years, it's all employees or no employees, and it's time to do this for all employees. I urge you to take a look at that, and I ask you to find the funds to fix our system. After all, this ordinance is bringing the Sheriff's Department into the same failed system we have, and it just makes it worse. You know, it's going to take action on you all's part, and I'm gonna tell you that the narrative in the employees that I speak to is that the employees feel neglected, the employees feel like they've been ignored, there's an election in May, I mean, there's an election in November, the budget's in May. I urge you to address the pay system for all employees, certainly not a problem with the Sheriff's Department, they earned their money, and the Virginia Beach Firefighters are proud to stand and bring them into the system, but let's please fix it for everybody, let's look at it. We know what the answer is. Pay disparity study that goes out to December is after the election, and all we're really doing is kicking the can down the road. You know what the answer is, please fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.[1776.51][1776.51](applause)
Michael Carter, and then after Mr. Carter's tavish, Vought is?
Michael, we're glad to have you.
Good to be here, sir. First, the former as councils, council members, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to be here, thanks for taking a few minutes to listen to me. The first thing I want to say is, is that thank you for recognizing Chief Dyzel. I've been fortunate enough... I've been fortunate enough to know him since I was literally born, and my father got to work with him as a deputy chief and served in his role for a very brief period of time. So I can't think of a better honor to do that, so thank you for bringing that up. If you'll allow me, I'm just going to take a few minutes here to read some notes that's going to correspond with what you're talking about here on this particular item with parity and pay compensation. I would have to agree with Mr. Bailey there, that I think we all will agree that we have a bunch of firefighters here tonight, as you may notice, that pay parity and pay compensation is something that we all believe in, and we believe that our fellow brothers and sisters from the Sheriff's Department certainly should have that same right. However, our system currently is kind of broken. So today, I want to briefly speak to you about that. I'm here to ask each of you to review the current pay, public safety pay structure and overall pay plan for the upcoming budget and beyond. As you're likely aware, there is a major issue surrounding compression with public safety plans, specifically within the Virginia Beach Fire Department, but also within the public safety system. This year, that compression is not addressed, and if not addressed, it will impact specifically for us over 80% of the first-line supervisors in Virginia Beach Fire Department. The pay compression that I am mentioning is not hundreds or even thousands of dollars, but it gets into the tens of thousands of dollars, and in some cases, over $31,000 at the same rank. That compression has been addressed over the last two years. However, it's been at a reasonable level. That reasonable level for folks that were promoted before 7/16, 2016, and after 7/1/17 still does not fix the current problem. And as you can, as you know, there are two types of compression, the vertical and horizontal. The vertical compression is still a major issue, and the horizontal compression is even broader. First with the vertical compression, a plethora of Virginia Beach Fire Department first-line and middle-management supervisors are still making less than subordinates, period. The issue of vertical compression has not been fixed or completely addressed. For example, there are currently over 20 captains that are still below the highest-paid master firefighter. Look, I know this is not an easy fix, but I'm asking to look and address it now. As Mr. Bailey stated, our public safety plan, I know there's been a long-term solution, I know that's not an easy fix, I know it's a lot of money, but a long-term solution needs to be addressed, not over a four-year plan, but starting now. However, I want you to understand that I do this job not because of funding, because I love being a Virginia Beach firefighter or a captain. I understand that public service should not make you economically rich, however, there's such disparity at both vertical and horizontal levels that I do feel it's important to address this. And it's not just about pay, but it's about equity and our value to the city of Virginia Beach. The fire chief and senior staff understand this issue and support the changes that address this and have put in in previous budgets. I would ask that this budget cycle be amended to start to address the public safety pay, while I know there's a discussion about public safety...
Mike, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Appreciate you coming down. Next speaker, please.
Tavish Valdez. And then after Mr. Valdez is Aiden Scott.
We welcome you tonight. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, honorable members of council, Mayor Sessoms. My name is Tavish Valdez, and I'm a captain in the Virginia Beach Fire Department. I'm speaking to you today in regards to the pay compression issue that has been prevalent in public safety for over a decade. And three pay grades in my 11-year employment have never reached the salary minimum. In fact, compression has affected me so severely that I've had to receive larger percentage raises during promotion just to meet minimum pay levels. The idea of a larger pay raise sounds great in theory, but in reality, it means that I have gone years without a very increase in pay. This coupled with rising insurance costs for my family, and lack of assistance programs like tuition reimbursement of the years, has placed a great financial strain on my family. I've taken thousands of student loans to meet the requirements of my current position, and my family has had to make cuts to our budget to make ends meet. We have sacrificed for years, and I'm asking for your help. I completely understand the difficulties and probably cannot fathom the complexities it takes to fix something as large as pay compression, but it's time to approach the elephant in the room. I, as well as my peers, have done extraordinary work for the city, day in and day out for years. We've exceeded the standards in place to become fire officers and uphold the morals of our city and our department daily. We do great work. None of us join this profession to become rich, but the reliance on overtime and secondary professions is unjust. We just want fair pay. Currently, the pay disparity amongst supervisors in my pay grade is tremendous. There is no structure to our pay scale. There are captains with a few months longer in grade, making almost $10,000 more than me, and captains with a few months less than me, making just as little. The most extreme example of pay compression is with our most recent promotion. I have almost two years in grade over this individual, and they make over $20,000 more than me. To make compression issues worse, individuals I supervise make up to $10,000 more than me. There are 60 members in our organization in which this is the case. Pay disparity is a problem that must be fixed. Yes, it is expensive. Yes, it is difficult. The longer we ignore the issue, the more it will continue to compound. I'm asking to please act on the words of our city manager, Mr. Hanson, address vertical compression as it occurs, to the extent possible and reasonable, so as to help recognize individuals who strive for promotion to higher leadership positions. Thank you for your time and listening to this, and I look forward to my continued years of service with our great city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Aiden Scott. And after Mr. Scott will be William Raftery.
We welcome you tonight.
Mayor Sessoms, council members, thank you for hearing me tonight. Mr. Moss, I'd like to thank you personally for your replies in my emails, most of them were around 10 o'clock at night, so I thank you very much. I appreciate your acknowledgement of this problem. Addressing the council is not easy for me. In my 11 years, I've never done this. There's been many issues, but I've never stood in front of you and asked you, asked you to help me with an issue. I'm speaking to you tonight to express my frustration and concerns with vertical compression funding, or lack thereof specifically, to the rank of fire captain. I'm a captain of the Virginia Beach Fire Department, I've been in my position for two years. Currently, there are fire captains that were hired less than a year of my hire date and promoted within a year of my hire date that make $10,000 more than me. It's hard to stomach when they're ever leaving me at shift change. Additionally, we have master firefighters, who I supervise, that make more than $10,000 in my base salary. On top of that, there are fire captains that were promoted this month that make $21,000 more than me. Also, I regularly fill in as battalion chief. While acting that capacity, I have two ranks above subordinates that make $10,000 more than my salary. In some cases, the pay disparity between fire captains is $30,000. I have put in the work to obtain my promotion and would like to be paid fairly. I was required to obtain a college degree to be eligible for promotion to fire captain, and earned that degree during the lean years when tuition reimbursement was not funded. I funded my own college degree and obtained all the requirements for fire captain as I strive for promotion to higher leadership positions. This dedication has taken time from my family and incurred a financial burden to obtain the college degree that was required for my promotion to fire captain. I have missed my three daughter soccer games, dance recitals, school events, and much, much more. In my pursuit of higher education and promotion, I have done the work and would like to be paid in a fair and equitable manner, when my equals with less than one year in time in grade are making $10,000 more than me, and doing the same job that is not even close to fair and equitable. This issue is becoming more and more frustrating, is a detriment for morale. I would expect the greatest city in the world to address this issue and make it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
William Raftery.
We welcome you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, city council members, Mr. Hanson, and the citizens of Virginia Beach. First, I want to echo Mike's statement. We really appreciate what you did for Chief Dizel, for a man who dedicated his life to public service, that is a very fitting honor. I am also here to speak to you on pay disparity, specifically within the Fire Department, and to vertical and horizontal compression issue among fire captains. Much of the pay disparity and compression issues in the Fire Department have stemmed from the many years that employees suffered no pay raises at all. For years, we have requested a public safety pay plan that Bill spoke to you about tonight that would resolve the issue and compression forever, but it was never implemented, and the problem of compression has just become more compounded, and affects every level of our department, from the newest firefighters up through senior leadership. Over the last two years, you and city council, along with city management, have recognized and addressed compression within the Virginia Beach Fire Department, but the issue of compression still remains for a large number of individuals. Those captains who were promoted prior to July 1st, 2016, were adjusted over a two-year period and have been adjusted to a reasonable level. For those promoted between July 1st of 2016 and July 1st of 2017, we were adjusted, you know, just a little bit last year, but never fully impacted. And for those individuals that have promoted since July 1st of last year, they're even further behind we are. So this has left those individuals promoted after July 1st of 2016 being compensated significantly less than an incredibly high number of individuals that they supervise. Several members of city council have openly stated that we need to address the public safety pay disparity and pay as a whole. Mr. Hanson has also stated that vertical compression with supervisors having lower salary has been his principal focus when making adjustments. However, there's no current plan in the proposed budget to address this issue. I would like to share with you some figures to show how I am personally impacted by the pay disparity in the Fire Department. There are currently 60, six zero, master firefighters and master firefighter medics that have a base, higher base salary than I do, including one that I directly supervise. Of those, 33 have a base salary of over $5,000 more than I do, 23 with over $7,000, and four with over $10,000. We are asking for compensation that is attainable and reasonable. I believe that a figure somewhere between the highest-paid master firefighter and the highest-paid captain would be appropriate, with a minimum captain's base salary adjusted to that which is higher than the minimum, a maximum, master firefighter's base salary. While we do not do this job for financial gains, fair pay is something that all people value. When you have the current disparities, it's very disheartening and makes us feel unappreciated for the hard work we do on a daily basis. I trust that you will find a way to rectify this issue, address the compression issues that are widespread throughout our department and the rest of the city, and fairly compensate the employees in the greatest city in the world.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
That's all the speakers. That's all the speakers, your honor.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion? I believe you did this, Mr. James.
Yes, I'd move with approval.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the motion.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Please, Mr. Moss.
Thank you very much. I curl out with what Bill Bailey said. I think this resolution sends the wrong signal. I think we just need to take an approach with the budget, take some other stuff out, and free up the money. I just, I just, I just think you don't have to do a study to look at the problem. I just think it's, I do think it's kicking the can down the road, and I am going to come up with a proposal, an alternative budget, that addresses this issue more substantially. I don't think a resolution does anything.
Thank you very much. I'll now go to a public hearing for planning and go to item number two, Argos Properties II LLC for conditional change rezoning from Ag 1 and Ag 2, agriculture to P1 preservation at R10 Residential at the north side of Princess Anne Road. Call the speakers, please.
Ann Crenshaw.
Ann, you have up to 10 minutes, and we welcome you.
I may not take them all.
You're my kind of lady.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. Procedurally, I would like to address that this matter was requested for a deferral on April the 3rd, and discussed with Planning Commission and Planning Staff, not Planning Commission, the Planning Staff. In fact, at the direction of a member of council, letters were mailed from the Planning Department advising opponents not to appear. In spite of the direction to send the letter, the member of council, as is her prerogative, moved that the application be denied and be heard. I would like to thank those members of council who appreciate the importance of fair play and fundamental fairness. Those members may very well not vote for my application, they may vote against it, but they have my gratitude in terms of fair play and transparency. Thank you. The total acreage of this property is 50.84 acres. In spite of some other comments made on the 3rd, this property has been in the Galiotis family for approximately 60 years. The conditional rezoning sought for a net 12.8 acres of developable land, of which 4.72 acres are open space. The open space further augmented by the 37.14 acres of preservation property, which would be maintained by the homeowners association. The applicant proposed 32 single-family lots. Each and every one of those lots are outside the flood plain. The ingress egress is unavoidably in the flood plain at Princess Anne Road. The staff report indicates that a variance is not necessary. The last information provided to me was that there are approximately 12,000 cars per day on that section of Princess Anne Road. The applicant has provided for a 20-foot pedestrian bike easement to provide connectivity to a proposed city park and the adjacent developments. The property is in the 65 to 70 Ekus Zone Subarea A, and has received the affirmative approval from the joint city navy review process. The density proposed is 1.5 per acre. The adjacent subdivision, which was approved by council, has 2.44 dwellings per acre. The applicant has offered payment of $4,400 per dwelling for the upgrades to the sanitary sewer system. At the onset, I would like to make sure that we're all operating on the same page. Your planning staff conducts, in each and every one of the applications that I have been involved with for over 15 years, a thorough analysis of each project. The staff consults and receives input from Public Works, Public Utilities, Traffic Engineering, Development Services, and Fire and Police, amongst other departments. This application has been pending for two years, and it has worked through the city departments up and down for two years. In fact, the Public Works Stormwater Engineering Center reviewed this project, and in your priority packet, you received a memo from city manager and an attachment from Mr. Leahy that stated as follows, "An approvable stormwater design may be achieved for the site based on the current stormwater regulations," with one exception. Ironically, if you read the next exception, which is bullet point two of your letter of April 13th, it says that they want more additional studies done and additional stormwater protection. You have to look closely, but there's a footnote two that's in that bulleted section that takes you down to the bottom of the page, and it says, "The city has studied and documented these changes, but has not yet officially changed its development standards." In other words, the exception is, "We would like you, Mr. Argos, to do more than what is codified and set forth in the city ordinances and regulations." This was recommended by staff and turned down by the Planning Commission. This is a unique situation. Council is being asked to make a decision based upon the applicant's private property rights under the Constitution and the city's current and legally defined standards of development. To address the occasional flooding on Princess Anne Road, the applicant offered to, in consultation with the city staff, to amend the proffers to set forth an amendment to the originally submitted proffers to include an affirmative requirement in the HOA disclosure documents as follows, and this was, this language was agreed to by staff. Princess Anne Road and portions of the new public right-of-way into the development may flood during a 100-year storm or other severe weather event. At the Planning Commission, Mr. Lynch, who spoke in opposition to this project, was asked directly, how many times, he showed pictures, how many times a year does this flood? A couple of times a year. Can you get in and out? Yes, I can get in and out. Would also like to point out that the pictures that are being circulated in the newspaper, on websites, are of Hurricane Matthew. They're not of a regular storm, they're of a 650-year storm. So the applicant understands that additional requirements and potential to lose additional lots due to the final approval process and site plan approval is possible. At this juncture, the applicant has gone through the varying long distance with the city. The staff has recommended approval. Two years is a long time to work through the requirements. At some point, due process and fundamental fairness require that the city council review this proposal under the existing city codes and regulations and act. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much, your honor.
Next speaker, please.
Brad Martin. Brad Martin.
We welcome you.
And then after Mr. Martin will be Ron Stebbins.
Do I get Ms. Crenshaw's extra thirty seconds?
Got three minutes, buddy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Brad Martin of American Engineering. First, I want to thank the five of you who voted against denial two weeks ago. We understand that wasn't a vote in favor of the rezoning, and I'm sorry that you have been unfairly accused of supporting our project. I also want to tip my hat to the residents in the audience, like Virginia Wasserberg and Mick Minicello and others, who have been forced to become part-time drainage experts because of the flooding damage that our city experienced eighteen months ago. We've made our technical analysis of the project. We've gotten agreement from the Public Works engineers and the planning staff. I read in a memo from City Manager Hanson that, quote, "We will be accepting the input of the Stormwater Engineering Center as definitive," unquote. So I hope you don't blame us for believing that with their support, we've presented a responsible project. I'll be happy to answer any technical questions if you have them. The challenge for you tonight is that our city experienced a six hundred and fifty-year storm event last October. In simple terms, a one-hundred-year storm is nine inches of rainfall. Hurricane Matthew dumped twelve inches of rain in some parts of the city after a prior storm dumped another nine inches just two weeks before. It's going to sound insensitive, but we just don't have design standards or drainage systems that handle that amount of rainfall. Nobody does. But that doesn't mean we can ignore those events or the property damage due to that flooding. The residents of our city have real concerns, real complaints, real issues, and some of them have even come up with real solutions. They deserve to be listened to, and the city owes them action. The hard work of stormwater management comes every day and every year in the maintenance of our existing drainage systems, appropriate big-picture analysis of how proposed developments will affect surrounding properties, and actually, when necessary, codifying new regulations by the proper procedures. Citizens can rightly say that the city has dropped the ball in some of these areas and maybe others. A vote for approval tonight would be a vote to accept the determination of the Stormwater Engineering Center as definitive and to allow this property owner to develop their property similarly to what others close by have been allowed to do. A vote of denial tonight, on the other hand, would certainly send a message that you're willing to oppose a responsible project. But in denying this project, you won't be doing the heavy lifting. That's, that's what really needs to be done, and there's nobody else to do it other than you. You won't be addressing the real problems to fix flooding damage and protect citizens from it happening again, and that's what these citizens have been asking for, and that's where this council's efforts need to be. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ron Stebbins, and after Mr. Stebbins will be Joe Brown.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, I'm Ron Stebbins. I live at twenty-two oh-nine Cabot Court, Virginia Beach, and I'm president of Princess Anne Quarter Civic League. Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, City Council members, City Manager, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Happy to have you.
I'm here to address our significant concerns about the Argos proposed development adjacent to Princess Anne Road and West Net Creek. I sent a preliminary email to all of you, so I'm not going to go over some of the items I mentioned there, but I'll talk about some other things. Virginia Beach currently has tens of millions of dollars in stormwater projects lined up. I mean, you know, we all read the newspapers, we can go to the city website, we can look at, you know, the planning things, it's all available for us to see. Right now, we don't believe it's a time to add to that backlog of costs, and this project would add to that backlog of costs. The problem is that those requirements that the previous speakers announced, that they said they've got all these things covered, they seem to be insufficient to protect our citizens and ensure the economic viability of projects before they're approved. I mean, we know the planning staff works hard to try to determine what's right, you know, in the development process, but we also believe that some of the metrics they're using may be outdated, you know, looking back, you know, twenty-twenty vision's great looking backwards, but we need to be looking into the future. And from what our previous developments have told us from the past, we have developments like Asheville Park, we have developments, you know, Sherwood Lakes. These are new developments. These are not, you know, that dated, and horrible flooding problems, and these are the same events that our city planning staff approved. Not any fault of their own, they probably have set metrics that they're just doing their checks in a block. And that's great, they're getting their checks in a block, but those metrics need to change. And just because they're using those old metrics that produce bad results in the past doesn't mean that we should continue approving projects based on bad metrics. I mean, you know, I sent you the picture, you guys saw the picture in the newspaper. You know, I lived there. I mean, I lived there, and I've been living there for quite a while. I bought the house there in two thousand and four, and I can tell you, I chuckle every time, you know, I see the developer says, "Oh, it's only in the hundred-year floodplain." Well, they should call it the every-other-year floodplain, because it floods more frequently. You know, yes, it was a big storm in Matthew, but that's not the only time it floods there. That West Net Creek is a pretty, you know, high-level creek compared to the roadbed, and the roadbed is higher than the surrounding areas as it slopes off the roadbed. So yes, it floods a lot. Another clear shortfall at the Argos project is that, as they mentioned, they offered forty-four hundred dollar proffer. Well, that hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year is about the equivalent of one year's real estate tax for that property. Well, you know, if you add in the two-to-five million dollar stormwater project that's going to come on later on to fix the Princess Anne Road project, well, you know, you're going to take about fifty years just to make your money back on real estate taxes. That's not a good economic incentive to approve a development for the city. You know, you've got to look a little longer term. These things add up over time. And I also don't think that the vacuum system that's required in that area for the overloaded pumping station that we just had another developer pay to try to get it up to speed, and now you're going to get it back into over-capacity status again, were driving more problems with this development. You know, I've, I've lived here since nineteen eighty, as I said, I've bought three homes in this area, Princess Anne Quarter. I live on a little knoll there that used to be the Arabian Horse Farm. Those that have lived here a long time know that, what it was back in the day. And I'm actually on the five-hundred-year floodplain, you know, so when I'm sitting up above and I can watch the flooding areas around and the hundred-year plains and you closer down to the creek. So it's not just something that people that live there know, that it's a serious problem. And we don't want to see other residents get suckered into buying a house there, and then they're going to have problems with flooding, they're going to have egress issues, you're not going to be able to get in and out of the neighborhood, emergency vehicles may not get in there. You know, we have to think about the safety and well-being of our citizens. Allowing developments without good egress options, without having emergency services, I mean, that's putting our residents at risk. I don't think we need to go down that road. I think that we can stop it, you know, you have the ability to just say no. You know, we want to have good developments in the city, we want to grow the city, we want to build the tax base, we want everybody to do well. We don't want to have our citizens, you know, having their houses flooded, having medical issues and not being able to get services from the city. I mean, there's a lot of issues that revolve around these, and we have enough neighborhoods already that have flooding problems to add to it. And I know Virginia Beach has a lot of low-level lying land, and it's difficult to find good land to build on. I mean, I get that, you know, but we also got to look out for the residents from time to time. It's not the city's responsibility, it's not the taxpayers' responsibility to bail out the developers that make speculative purchases of land and want to build on it, and we need to start holding them to a higher standard. You know, if they're going to make something, have them put up five million dollars and fix the whole drainage system around there. Got no complaints from us then, but he's not offering that. He's offering to throw a few dollars at the, at the city and hope that that's going to be enough that won't even cover the people coming out to do the assessment on the pumping station. I mean, a hundred thirty thousand dollars wouldn't pay for anything. So, I mean, it's just, you know, looking at it from a realistic perspective. Our Civic League encourages you to vote no on the Argos development. That means a denial of it. The Planning Commission doesn't often forward noes to the City Council, while they did in this case, and for good reason. And we encourage you to take their advice on this. Thank you for the service to our city and the time you allowed me to speak.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Next speaker.
Joe Brown. And after Mr. Brown will be Rick Kowalowicz.
We welcome you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you once again. I'm representing my folks who are property owners in the Princess Anne Quarter neighborhood, which borders the property in question. I'd like to present our strong opposition to the requested rezoning for the agricultural to residential zoning. At the last meeting, Councilwoman Henley informed everyone that the deed for the parcel in question is described in the city records as Holland Swamp. That's very alarming to me. The residents of the surrounding neighborhoods oppose the development of this land. We oppose the rezoning because the location proposed for the development is wetlands. More directly, it is a swamp. A swamp is not a bad thing. In fact, it is a vital part of the natural filtration and stormwater drainage, which flows into West Net Creek and then to Back Bay. But a swamp is not appropriate for residential development. The surrounding residents already deal with serious flooding of Princess Anne Road following even moderate rainstorms. This flooding impedes the passage of emergency vehicles and the egress of residents, making for a dangerous situation. Building homes on the proposed site will exacerbate the existing flooding problem, and we must take into account the safety of our citizens. If this development is approved, the vacuum system, which is in the process of being upgraded, will again be over-capacity to the low-lying topography, which eliminates the possibility of a normal gravity drain system. This is an expensive system to build and maintain, and it is, and it is subject to failure, putting residents' property and lives at greater risk. Mr. Barry Frankfield, Director of the Department of Planning, indicated he reviewed the engineering plan and feels the stormwater plan has a potential to work. But a question, weren't the stormwater plans for Asheville Park also reviewed and believed to be acceptable by the Planning Department? We see the flooding Asheville Park residents are dealing with now. Should we consider that there might be a gap between potential plan and reality, especially in the light of the recent notice that the city is requesting thirty million dollars in bonds for stormwater cleanup projects, with Asheville Park being one of the largest? We have an opportunity tonight to prevent a similar bad decision. In the event the developer's proposed stormwater plan for Holland Swamp does not work, the developer will not be held responsible. The city's residents and taxpayers will be asked to pay for cleanup. The result of building on a swamp is predictable. Nature will retain its swamp. Common sense tells us development of a swamp is not the correct course of action. This is why the City Planning Commission members wisely visited the site, and they voted to recommend denial of this request. Again, the Planning Commission denied the request. I see I'm running out of time here, I'll kind of cut down to it. The developer's own attorney at our Planning Commission did say that they would be fine with including buyer beware language in the proposed home sale contracts. I don't in any way, shape, or form think buyer beware is a responsible development proposal. Some of you indicated, two weeks ago from tonight, I believe Mr. Jones said he played back there as a child, and it was swampland. Miss Abbott has kayaked, so, again, we urge you to motion to deny.
Thank you for coming.
Can I give these handouts?
To the clerk, please. Next speaker, please.
Rick Kowalowicz, and after Mr. Kowalowicz, thank you, is Rona Marsh.
Rick, we welcome you, sir.
Mr. Sessoms, good to see you.
I tell you, it's been a couple of years.
I'm, I'm here with a little bit of mixed emotions, first of all, because stormwater is a big issue. I've had a lot of phone calls about this, and, you know, I live on Twenty-Four Street. I'll share a little story again. Twenty-Four Street, the storm we had just a couple of days ago, we had two inches of water on Twenty-Four Street in the little, little area we have there, and that's just not normal. Guy that lives next door to me, he's been there fifty years, he said he's never seen it before. But I think we have a changing weather pattern. I think we need to adapt to what's going on, but I do have concerns about people's property rights, because there's been other people that have similar projects been approved. This precedent-setting thing creates a problem for all of us, but I think it's time to make tough decisions, and I'm here not to support approving this, this plan. I think it would be a feckless, reckless decision to approve this. So I'm going to make this short. Please don't approve it. Let's focus on our existing stormwater problems and fix that before we think about approving any other, other developments in low-lying areas. I appreciate your time. And by the way, can I save my time for next time I speak?
Nope. Thanks, speaker. Nicely.
Um, Rona Marsh, and after Mrs. Marsh will be Heidi Jeffries.
We welcome you back, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. You should all have in front of you a sheet of paper like this with a photo on it. I hope you do have that sheet of paper with a photo. And the question I want to ask you is, would any of you on council want to drive through this two-to-three feet of water to get to your homes? And I'm going to show the photo of the people out here, because this is a photo that's been on the internet, it's been circulating. Most emergency vehicles will not go through it, but it is a real photo that was taken and provided by Joe Brown's mom. So it's a real photo. If you look at the photo, you see that that is the Ashton Builders sign. That is advertising their sale. Down here is what it looks like when it's not raining. So it's very capable for someone to come to town, to see that sign, and think they could buy their dream home. That would be a lovely thing for them to do. But you know what? Is that really what they want to do? No. Are we fooling them? Are we, are we becoming the greatest city that fools people into buying homes that are going to be flooded? I don't think we have a hundred-year flood with Hurricane Matthew. I think we have a lot more frequent flooding going on. And if the people who are going to be buying are told that it's buyer beware, is that really what we want to get known for? That we sell property, buyer beware? Is that our reputation? The greatest city, but the property we sell is buyer beware? I think you really need to step back, because a lot of people are looking at this on social media. They're seeing how you all are acting on this, and they're wondering what in the world is going on, because they see the developers who are making contributions, they're seeing the developers who are contributing to VPAP. The Argos gentleman who owns that contributed a lot to the governor. Now, not that the governor is here, but Ashton contributed five hundred dollars to the last campaign of Mr. Davenport and five hundred dollars to the current campaign. So we see a lot of focus on the developers contributing to members who are on this council. And so it's really down to the quality of life for our people, because what we've got now are the highest stormwater fees, and we now have a thirty-million-dollar bond. You guys are adding more debt to our debt that we already have. You know I've come and talked to you about this before. I've talked to you about the pension costs and the pension liabilities, and in addition to the two-hundred-and-seven million every year we pay for debt interest and pension paydown, we're going to be looking at even more debt. We're going to get to over three billion in debt between pension liabilities and total debt. So I'm asking you to uphold what the Planning Commission did and deny this. Do not do this so that we can keep our citizens out of debt and do a better job for our existing people.
Thank you very much. Could you tell me when that picture was taken? Do you know?
I believe it was two thousand and sixteen.
Two thou-
Yeah, I believe it was. I didn't take the picture there. I believe Joe Brown's mother took it, or his father took it, but it was probably in two thousand and sixteen. But it's still, nobody could drive through this. And I think Mr. Hanson talked to people from Winter Woods who couldn't drive through water like this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Heidi Jeffries, and then after Mrs. Jeffries will be Reg Greenman.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm here speaking for Virginia Wasserberg, who couldn't be here tonight, so she gave me her statement to read in her stead.
Very good.
Okay. Members of the council, thank you for allowing Ms. Jeffries to read my statement. I respectfully ask that you vote opposed to the rezoning of this land parcel from agricultural to residential. I have provided each of you a copy of the Health Impact Assessment Report on Extreme Flooding in Escambia County, April through May, two thousand and fourteen. This detailed report addresses the human health hazards associated with flooding from extreme precipitation. Page eight of the report reads, "Flooding may also have negative impacts on health by increasing the risk of certain bacterial and protozoan diseases that are typically associated with fecal, oral,..." associated with fecal, oral transmission, or transmission through contaminated food and water." This finding is truth. On October 9, 2016, my husband and I evacuated our children away from our flooded home in a kayak through the bacteria-infested floodwaters of South Plaza Trail. My son placed his hands in the waters and suffered weeks of illness from doing so. The study also reveals flooding may also have impacts on the mental health of individuals, both in the short and long term. The flood itself can be a cause of significant stress, and additional stress during the recovery period may also lead to mental health issues. These findings are true. A specific mental illness covered in the study is post-traumatic stress. I experienced a significant amount of stress through my own flood and recovery process. After returning to our restored home, I developed post-traumatic stress due to the flooding of my home and property. Now that I no longer reside in that home, I'm happy to report that I am in recovery. This land parcel is in the FEMA-mapped AE flood zone. If the parcel remains zoned for agriculture, you can ensure the protection of potential residents against flood-related health hazards. You have a God-given opportunity to serve and protect the citizens of Virginia Beach, and I humbly request you do so by voting in opposition to this rezoning. Respectfully submitted, my friend, Virginia Wasserberg.
Thank you very much for coming.
Reg Greenman. And after Reg will be Dylan Lloyd.
We welcome you back, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city manager. I don't know Ron Steffen, but he pretty much was reading my notes, so I'm not gonna repeat all the great points that Ron made. I will take a line from Brad Martin, who said, "You're sending a message." This is really, once again, about priorities. 1,400 homes flooded during Hurricane Matthew. Why on earth would we start approving development in an area where we already have known flooding issues? It doesn't make any sense. 32 additional homes, that's not really a need that they have. You've heard from so many speakers here today. I didn't know it was called the Holland Swamp. I've been a proponent of Drain the Swamp. I would encourage you to do the same. I went to the ODU seminar, and it talked about the sea level rise and the sinking landmass, and how it's changing the metrics for our city. And I spent a couple hours there, being educated by ODU, on the problems that we have. So did Virginia Wasserberg, and so did many people in this room. This is a bad idea. And you've had ample people come up and tell you why. I would just encourage you to make a good decision here and say no. Resist the temptation and do the right thing. Buyer beware? Really? Is that what our new standard is gonna be? It's an embarrassment. We're a wonderful city, but you guys have got to do better. So please, I encourage you, turn this down. There are plenty of other opportunities to develop in our city. This is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dylan Lloyd.
Bless you.
And then after Mr. Lloyd will be Darlene Beckett.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. The city members of council?
Got a few sound.
Thanks for having me. I was thinking about Mr. Greenman and what he just said. Why is a swamp so hard to drain? What is a swamp? And if you look it up on your phone here, you'll find anything but environmental science, unfortunately, in the results. But a swamp contains anaerobic soils with a higher clay content than most of the surrounding soils, which gives it a longer time to filter, therefore it builds up whenever there's a rain event. Now, I did geotechnical work for Kellum, as well as the Nemo Water Tower over there off Princess Anne Road. And the clay content around that soil allows for a buildup of water. Whenever it rains, you don't need a 500-year flood event. As many people have said, you go there after your typical nor'easter, which we get about two or three of them every winter, and that whole road is flooded out. Everyone has the right to do what they want to do with their own property. Individual liberty is very important, near and dear to my heart. And I do not want to be the one to tell someone else what they can do with what they bought and what other people have in their decisions to buy. But look at what's gonna happen down the road. We talked about first responders. Firefighters, police might have trouble getting to these areas. And I don't want to get another call, as I did on October 8, at 3:00 in the morning, from a friend who lived in Windsor Woods, off Bow Creek Boulevard. I drove over there in my truck, because I had a four-wheel drive, and I said, "Does anyone need some help?" And I got a response on Facebook. By the time I got to the creek, I made it maybe halfway up, and water started rushing in through my door. I got out, and I backed up, and I looked around, and I could hear faint screams and cries from the houses around, of people freaking out because water was coming through their doors. Several people were trying to push their cars out of the street. I was able to back my truck into several of them and help them get out of the ditch. There were people on the side of the road, just giving up, walking to the nearest gas station, hoping to get some help. I wasn't able to make it to my friend's house that night, and he had to sleep on the second floor attic, because it's a single-story house. I just don't want to get any more 3:00 a.m. calls like that, and I really hope you guys will consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Darlene Beckett.
We welcome you tonight.
Hello. How were you?
Fine, thank you.
I was not at the last meeting. My name is Darlene Beckett. I live at 2373 Fenwick Way, Princess Anne Quarter. And I guess one of the things that makes me a little concerned is the "buyer beware." You know, being in real estate, that's not really a good marketing plan for this particular project. I mean, I think about all the other things that could come about from that. What about financing? What lender is going to want to fund loans, mortgage loans, on something that comes up and says "buyer beware"? I mean, I'm all for development, but for this particular piece of property, we've already had the other development right behind us as well. I just really think that it's a bad idea. And as far as the flooding, if the standard of, is it bad enough? Is it passable? No. I mean, there is a lot, there is a lot more than just the Hurricane Matthew. There's a lot of rain that comes down our way, and it does flood, and it does cause damage. So I would just ask you to say no, vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kretschall. You have three minutes rebuttal, if you'd like.
I don't have a whole lot more to say, other than the facts are the facts are the facts. And without being overly critical, it's up to city management and you as our elected leaders to set the standards as to what the public should rely on as to what the stormwater regulations are. We can only rely on what you tell us. And that we did. It is patently unfair to put the onus of council's failure to act over the past several years on my client.
Thank you. If you want to...
If I can add some technical data, and I'm not gonna stand up here and disagree with a lot of things that were said, except for Mr. Stevens, who said $130,000 doesn't pay for anything. I would certainly disagree with that. Maybe you can give me a loan later. We don't disagree with a lot of what was said. This property is absolutely the Holland Swamp over here, right next to West Net Creek. We have taken every line that the city and the environmental engineers and the Army Corps of Engineers, you see them here in all the different colors, and we have taken the most conservative drawing of all of those lines. We actually had an earlier plan that showed the backyards of these lots, that were not gonna be built, included in some of those lands, and we even pulled them out of there. So there is 38 acres here of Holland Swamp. I don't disagree with the people who have said that, that is down at an elevation of two or three feet. The remaining 12 acres that we're proposing to develop is up at an elevation of eight or nine feet. And if you saw the newspaper photo this morning, you saw Princess Anne Road flooded, and you saw in the foreground Fenwick Way starting to rise out of Princess Anne Road and get out of the water. And that's exactly what we're proposing to do here. Princess Anne Road floods. It's not our domain to raise that road, to do anything to that road. We are gonna rise up as fast as we can, and we are gonna... If there is a public access need on Princess Anne Road for emergency vehicles, then that need needs to be addressed, because that's public infrastructure. We are coming up out of here as quickly as we can. I do want to address a couple more things before my time is out. We are being judged on a 650-year storm and the mistakes of the past, and that is unfortunate, because we've got none of those challenges on this piece of property. And the last thing I'll say is, Mr. Jones, it was mentioned that you, two weeks ago, and again, Mr. Brown mentioned it, you were hunting back here when you were a kid. I think the statute of limitations has expired, but if you could identify where that stump hole was, I bet we could identify that it's in the 38 acres of swamp and not the area that we're developing.
Thank you very much. Okay. I believe this is in the Princess Anne District.
I believe it is.
Thankfully. We have no such problems in Centerville, Mr. Jones.
I'm sure. Well, the main thing is that we learn from our mistakes of the past. And I think one of the things that we are learning is that we did not properly require some of our past developments to go through the rigors of determining stormwater conditions before a rezoning. And that we are attempting to change, and we are also attempting to change some of the standards. But just because something maybe appears by some calculation to be able to escape flooding, when we know from our own experience that the area floods, it's kind of difficult to say, "But these numbers say it's not gonna flood, so we can go ahead and do it anyway." I've just seen all of these areas, before there was development in this area, before Princess Anne Quarters was there, before the new development was there, back in the olden days, when it was just Princess Anne Road, it probably wasn't called that then, and the older houses that were there, over and over and over again, when there was a storm, didn't have to be a hurricane, but a storm with a lot of rain, water would be up around all those houses. It's been happening for decades that I remember, and I don't know how much longer before then. And it's very hard for me to forget what I have seen and pretend that this probably will or may not flood if it's developed. I just can't get to that point. Knowing that all of this area that's West Net Creek and that floodplain around it is the floodplain that drains the area from about Ship's Corner Road all the way out West Net Creek to get to the North Landing River. That's a big area that is going to be shedding water to come down through here to get to the North Landing River and then the Currituck Sound. This is a major floodplain, a major floodway, and this is very close. And maybe some of that land does get to a little knoll that's a little higher in elevation, but the soil itself is of a soil type that is very poorly drained. I forgot which one of the speakers was talking about the characteristics of the soil. And that's what we're not looking at, is what are the soils that are there? And there are soils that don't drain and are very poorly drained, and that's what constitutes this kind of area. It would be something that I just couldn't do to say it's okay to put 32 houses in that place, on that little knoll, knowing how water tends to be all around that area, and to even invite people to, if they want to be the "buyer beware," to invest their money in it. It just is not a good thing. And I remember expressing it when the area that's now developing next to it, that I felt kind of pushed into a corner in saying okay to that property, because there had been negotiations with the staff about building this new vacuum sewer system, and they were going to contribute a certain amount. And I said, "Well, you've gone so far that maybe that developer is..." But the one next to it, please don't ask me to vote for it. And here we are tonight. Just the fact that it's a vacuum sewer system is a pretty big red flag to say that that area's gonna be poorly drained. And yes, the vacuum system that is there now is going to have to have some major improvements. And to put some more in that area is just not something that I think is responsible at all. We look at Asheville Park. It's a new development, and I really hate to keep saying Asheville Park, because it's not good to label that very nice neighborhood as being a problem area. But we're in that dilemma that we're in, because our staff thought that the drainage system that was installed there was proper and was adequate and was going to drain properly and accepted it. And now that we find out it's not, we're gonna be having to spend many millions of dollars to correct that mistake. And I say, "Learning from our mistakes," because this southern watershed, and I've been saying this so many times for so many years, is different from the Chesapeake watershed and that area to the north of the city, that everybody's been used to draining all these years, and we find out that has problems. But I can absolutely assure you, as we get down in the southern watersheds, the soils are different, there's high water table, there are a lot of factors that are involved that makes it not the right place for a lot of high-density development, and that's why we've tried to steer clear of it. And when we're talking about dealing with these flood areas and what we should do, I think the very first thing we should do is prevent the problem before it gets to be a problem. And that means this is not the right place for 32 more houses. Now, I recognize property rights, and I recognize property, the position of the owner of the property, and I believe that what we're required to do is to provide a reasonable use of the property. Now, this is zoned agricultural, and I don't think it's ever been in agricultural production, but agricultural property does allow the building of residential. Poorly drained soils can support one house for every 10 acres of poorly drained soil. If it's well-drained soil, which I don't think this is, it could have a house for every five acres of well-drained soil. So there is a possibility of putting a nice residential unit there, might make a nice estate if somebody wants to be in an area like that. So there is, I think, a reasonable use of the property. I think 32 lots on 12 acres that are in this very vulnerable position for flooding is not a good use for the property. And I can appreciate the property owner wanting to maximize the value, but I think he may get a profit, but I think the people who buy in there are going to have problems forever, and I think the taxpayers are gonna be, pardon the pun, bailing them out. And I don't think that's something that we should do, and so my motion is going to be to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Back. I have a second discussion, Bobby.
Yeah, thank you. You know, first of all, I would like to say I thought that tonight was a healthy process. We had the proponents and opponents, and it was an education for the public on how this body makes decisions. And I applaud the efforts and civility of both sides. I think, you know, once again, you know, it's always good to talk about these things. You know, we don't want to be predisposed about things, but one thing we have to push for is equity and fairness and allow everybody a fair hearing, you know, to encourage businesses to come here. But that being said, you know, one of the things I've learned is that, you know, sometimes it's better to err on the side of caution. Last Saturday, I was invited to go to Asheville Park on a tour. I brought my wife up there, and we spent the better part of two hours up there, just driving around Asheville Park and all the areas around. And what struck me was some of the bodies of water, the water tables were high, and we really didn't have any significant rain event recently. So it's ripe for, you know, problems in the future. And I think the problems that we have today, I think, are gonna be compounded over the years going forward, in terms of sea level rise and everything else. And engineering is gonna be a major part of it, but yes, even in Centerville District, you know, we've had flooding incidents. And a number of years ago, the people at Rosemont Forest, you know, this council gave us $6.5 million to build a pump station. us $6.5 million to build a pump station, and it worked for a long time, but Matthew was an eye-opener and a shot across the bow about what may be coming. Now, hopefully, that was a 650-year event, but we can't predict how many are not going to come or whatever. But the one thing I think that we are assured that stormwater is going to be, continue to be, an ongoing problem as we go forward. So the point is, though, I don't think we should, you know, be in a position where we look back and say we should have exercised caution then. And listen, you know, my wife and I talked, you know, development is good in certain areas. It employs carpenters, plumbers, technicians, people buy carpet and fixtures and everything. It employs people. But the point is, I think we have to be judicious going forward, and then some areas in the city, the development is far more appropriate, you know, than in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call for the question? Call for the question, please.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have denied the application of our...
We now go to item number four, ACC Property Solutions, Inc., for conditional change rezoning from A-12 apartment to conditional R-5S residential at 1602 Cypress Avenue. Eddie, how are you, sir?
Eddie Burdon.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, I will be brief, as this was on your consent agenda, as it was approved on consent by the Planning Commission, as recommended for approval by your staff. This is a downzoning. The piece of property is non-conforming in lot size for its current A-12 zoning, as well as the proposed R-5S downzoning with proper for a specific plant. The house that's on the property was built in 1939. Obviously, we didn't have a subdivision ordinance or a zoning ordinance in Prince An County in 1939. Mr. Lathrop, his company purchased this property at a foreclosure, and the house is in bad shape. He proposes to, we're going to come in for a non-conformal use modification, and staff suggested, let's just rezone to R-5S, which does make a lot more sense. This property is in a small, relatively small area that is not included in the Old Beach Overlay District, which cured the problem of A-12 zoning doesn't allow single-family homes. All right, so all I can build on the property today is a duplex, and it's a very small piece of property. I don't think a duplex would be appropriate. So what is proposed is a smaller footprint. It's a two-and-a-half-story house, smaller footprint than what is there now. Setbacks narrow like six inches and nine inches and three feet on the side setbacks, which allows us to meet fire code, and there will be no windows that aren't fire resistant. And then four feet on the front, instead of six inches. The footprint of the house is reduced by 225 square feet. The accessory structure goes away. There's no onsite parking today that meets code. Onsite parking will be met. The lot coverage will be met. It'll be down to below 35%, which is the lot coverage permitted in the R-5S district. So the only non-conforming aspects after this, which are not non-conforming from zoning, is from a setback standpoint, are the front and side yard setbacks, which are both improved. But given the very small nature of the lot, it's unavoidable. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Next speaker, please.
Jack Bane. And then after Mr. Bane will be Cynthia Rickman.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Mr. Manager, thank you very much. My name is Jack Bane. I had not planned to speak tonight. I had come here just to try to follow the process. I got a notice from the Planning Commission about somebody who's changing the zoning on a property next to, we're on the property to the west of that property, at 703 16th Street. And so I was like, "Well, let me just go to the Planning Commission." And the Planning Commission, as the record shows, approved this, and I do like the idea. I really think that, well, let me just tell you what the property looks like now. It's really, he showed a picture from the front, but my property's on the back, and it looks pretty bad. It's full of trash and garbage, and I think a lot of homeless and vagrants have been hanging out in there and doing stuff. And so I'm looking at, as we're starting to develop that property for our own residents, the property behind it, I was looking at, you know, what does this mean to me with this property like that? And I said, "Well, I think we can go move into this lot to the west, knowing that someday somebody will buy this and make use of this land and gentrify the property, gentrify the lot." And so I was really actually happy to see this come in the notice in the mail from the Planning Commission. And I kind of went to that. Nobody said anything negative about it at the Planning Commission. It voted and went right through. And so I would just like to say I like the idea of this thing being developed. It's a very small lot. In fact, I'm real surprised that somebody could make use of that. So I like the idea of what they're going to do. I'd like to see a residence there next to our future residence, and I'd hope you'd vote for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cynthia Rickman.
We welcome you tonight.
It's not city council without opposition.
Citizens.
That's a good one.
It's good to see you.
Well, I sent out an email. I hope everybody received it. I'm not against change. I'm just against three stories, one foot from my property next door. Basically, I agree. It's an eyesore, it's been an eyesore. It's been pre-foreclosure for over two years. I know there were vagrants living in it, but it's a 2,100-square-foot lot. They're proposing a 23-foot-wide home that will be over 30 feet tall. So next to my bungalow will be this tower. A very similar property was on the market on 16th Street, about a block up, and Mr. Burdon also handled that one. But when that one was approved, they were only approved a two-story dwelling, so they didn't get the skinny tower. And that's really what my opposition is. I realize that whatever you all decide, I have to live with it next door, and that's what could happen on my property also. But mine's already been renovated. I just don't like to see the tall, skinny homes that we tried to stop and shadow on and stop throughout the area being allowed to start up all over again by saying, "Let's rezone it." And again, this is a 2,100-square-foot lot, which, getting a 2,100-square-foot home. And that's the position that I stand on.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
That's all the speakers, sir.
Mr. Burdon, you want to rebut? You have three minutes, sir? You're my friend.
My neighbor in Proton, and oftentimes client, Ms. Rickman, I appreciate her coming down. We talked a little bit outside. She doesn't live in this property, so that's very clear. The, and Ms. Rickman indicated she did try to buy the property before it went to foreclosure. It's a two-and-a-half-story dwelling, and it is a 2,200-square-foot lot. The dwelling at two-and-a-half stories will have about 1,650 square feet of living area, 1,700 square feet of living area max, and it'll be three feet off the property line, whereas the current house is, like I said, six inches off the property line. And we're below the lot coverage. We don't need any other approvals.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really, we've seen a lot of revitalization in this general area over there, and certainly, I'm familiar with that particular structure. Used to be a hound dog that lived there, and whenever I'd go drive and surf, and he'd be just hanging out on the fence for many, many years ago. But it's really a deplorable condition, and, you know, I think that what they've come up here in improving the setbacks and those types of things is definitely a betterment to what's there. And so with that in mind, I'd recommend it for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Call for the question, please. Mr. Jones, I'll go to appointments.
Mr. Hart, may I have your vote?
Aye.
11 to 0, you've passed the application.
Thank you for appointments, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, Mr. Billy Vaughn, to the Community Policy and Management Team, Laurie Shaw, to the Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia Regional Board, Beatrice Amberman, and to the Process Improvement Steering Committee, Council Lady Jessica Abbott.
Hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, please. Any unfinished? Any new? Will adjourn. Thank you all very much.